It's just delightful to see you all. I love DGT, been a member for years and years, and I'm filling some big shoes tonight. Joe D is in the beautiful city of Santa Fe. My name is Larry Bodine. I am a past president of Democrats of Greater Tucson. Let me give a brief introduction about our speaker tonight. She is Lisa Nutt, and she will face War II City Councilman Paul Cunningham in the primary election on August 1st. The city is already, as of today, mailing out ballots, and it's an all male election, so we'll be looking forward to the results. Lisa Nutt is a Realtor by occupation and a Democrat. She grew up in Douglas and has been a small business owner and licensed real estate agent since 2018. She served as the President of the National Association of Women Business Owners. I was able to pick out five priorities that Lisa has: housing, public safety, economic development, affordable housing, and better staffing and morale in Tucson Police Department. And with that, Lisa, the floor is yours. Go right ahead.
Thank you so much. Some of you may have heard, I ask for space and grace, right? For my doggies especially. I do have one lying right next to me. So far, she's okay, but that could change. So I appreciate your consideration. And thank you all for joining us this evening, on this Thursday evening, making time to be here. Some of you mentioned that you were on with us the last time, so thank you for joining us once again. I am daring greatly, I like to say, and have entered the arena, taking on, as you all know, a 12-year incumbent. And it's as a result of having been civically engaged my entire adult life. And what I mean by that is, of course, voting, including in primaries, right? But also, I have advocated for policy throughout my adult life and career in different roles I have held, including meeting with legislators in Phoenix or in Washington DC, being part of delegations, writing letters, sending emails, text messages, attending public meetings, submitting comments, all of the things that we want our democracy to make available and for people to avail themselves of. And that is no longer enough. And so as a result, and really as a mother to two young boys, is why I have decided, made the diligent decision to take on this latest challenge.
All right. Are you ready for some questions, or did you want to continue speaking a little bit?
I would love some questions. I prefer this to be a dialogue and not a monologue.
All right, very good. So you mentioned the morale of Tucson Police Department. What specific steps would you take to improve the morale?
Sure, thanks. And I will remind the group, because I'm not sure if this came up the last time we were together, but my brother served as TPD for nearly 12 years. Being in law enforcement is an important part of our family's history. And of course, when he was on patrol, making sure that he got safely home every day after his shift was our highest priority. Some of the morale issues in the conversations I'm having have to do with officers not feeling supported in doing the work they feel they are here to do on behalf of our community. So that is among the very first things to engage a dialogue in, is that needed shift, so that they are supported in doing the work that they are ready, willing, and able to do. There has been intentional efforts by this mayor and council to prevent existing laws from being enforced, for example. And so addressing that would be among the first priorities.
Marathon, go right ahead.
Yeah, just a clarification, Lisa.
Yes.
Just which laws are you referring to that are not being implemented?
So some of the laws related to the encampments in our community, right? Some of the drug use, some of the vandalism, retail theft. Those are the ones that are coming up. There are certain sections of the city that law enforcement has been specifically asked to defer enforcement on. And so that is creating a series of complications and consequences, not only to the community, but in terms of, like I said, the relationship with law enforcement and then their sense of morale and duty.
So on a related aspect, would you like to clarify, I think you said this at our last meeting too, but it'd be nice to hear it again. What would you intend to do with the problem of homelessness? Which is not the same thing as criminals, right?
Absolutely, sure. So being unhoused is not against the law, right? Just like having mental health issues is not against the law either. However, the Housing First Policy that this mayor and council has enacted and in specifically eliminating the barriers to housing has created either foreseen or unforeseen consequences. So one of the examples, I believe I shared last time, and I will repeat this time, is that as a result, places like the Center for Opportunity, right? The Partnership with Gospel Rescue Mission and the HSL Foundation have empty beds. They're at about 60% capacity, right? Because they are what is called a high-barrier center. Because the community members who choose the treatment and the support and the services need to meet the expectations of the program. So once the city's Housing First Policy was enacted, it resulted in people not seeking that treatment because they could get housed with no expectations. So I believe that merits a revisiting. Because it doesn't serve our community that there are beds available that are not being used as a result. So that is the first thing. The other relationships I'd like to take a deeper look at are the relationships with the multiple social service agencies that we partner with on the issue of housing and homelessness. There are very few who are actively recruiting people into their services and programs. The expectation is that people will come to their doors. The reasons people are unhoused vary, right? And what we also know is that about a quarter are also struggling with substance abuse disorder. Another quarter are struggling with mental health, and an unknown number are struggling with both. Tucson distinguishes itself in the United States as having more nonprofits per capita than any other city our size. I believe I'm stating that correctly. So we have a wealth of resources available in our community. We need to do a better job, in my view, of leveraging and activating them.
Following up on that, let me ask a question. In your interview with the Daily Star, you mentioned that you wanted to build out Tucson's housing capacity. We do have a housing shortage. You wanted to put affordable housing central to job locations and public transportation. So specifically, how would you encourage builders to build more affordable housing?
So the builders want to build more affordable housing. It's the zoning and ordinances that get in their way. And for example, just a few months ago, this mayor and council passed an ordinance that allows for now building townhomes within city limits. That took nine months and is not going to move the needle much on the supply end that we require. A deeper review and revisiting again of our land use code, because in the city, it's going to be about infill, and it's also going to be commercial and getting more mixed use in our commercial and also taking a look at what we call underutilized space. So we definitely need to take a more urgent approach to all of that. Because the builders I talked to are very interested in building more inventory. It is the frameworks within the city that do not allow that. In fact, status quo means that any new project will take about four years to bring to fruition. It's generally two to three years on the zoning issue and another eight to nine months on the permitting issue. I am challenging the status quo. We can do better. Our community demands it and deserves it.
Quick follow-up question. You had mentioned that what you would like to do would be to get local, public, and private players together so that they're coordinating and held accountable for specific goals. Can you give me an example of how that would work?
Sure. So on the supply issue with regards to housing, public-private partnerships are, I believe, primed and are not being looked at. Part of it has to do with the lack of transparency from the city currently and its portfolio of properties. No one knows, outside of the city, it seems, what that portfolio of properties is. And so it's also a way to be able to reduce costs, right? So if the city, for example, is able to offer up a property or vacant lot, for example, as their contribution to the project, then the private sector can come in to do what they do best, which is build.
All right. Let's turn to Joe D. I understand, Joe, we have a number of questions in the chat.
Okay, so our first question is from Maria Parsons. Could you lay out some of your background as a Democrat and your history and connections with Democratic organizations and the party here in Tucson?
So I'm an outsider to the political machine. And I've been registered both as a Democrat and as an independent. Always a left-leaning independent. I've worked for Democratic administrations. I've also worked for Republican administrations. So for me, it is taking the politics out of policy. And that's true for me as a candidate now. I am a Democrat. Democrats consider themselves the big tent party. And that is part of why I am a Democrat. So I consider myself an independent Democrat. And this journey has confirmed that every step of the way.
All right, Joe, I think we've got yet another question. Go ahead.
I do, yes. From Susie Anderson. Hi, Susie. How do you develop housing for those who do not want to be housed or in programs? Do you believe the unhoused population needs to be in a social service to receive housing?
So again, the support can be calibrated to the circumstance of the individual. And so there is no one-size-fits-all, but there definitely needs to be an improvement on the comprehensiveness and the coordination of what is currently being offered. Again, the Housing First Policy has given us information and data. How are we using that information and data to make the improvements that need to be made? Part of continuous improvement, so I've earned an MBA, I teach business. Part of what we have an opportunity to do is to understand what is working, keep doing that, what isn't working, and either revisit it, retool it in order for it to be more responsive, and/or what needs to be eliminated. And those who don't want to receive support, there's some circumstances where it's mandated, right? Sometimes judicially, it is mandated. So again, it's hard to give a more specific answer without knowing the person that we might be wanting to service and support.
Next question. Why do you believe zoning rules have been set to discourage more available low-cost housing? What I have seen with LD20 is that there will be a few affordable houses, but there will be a great number of more costly housing.
The zoning and the ordinances can be changed and improved to allow for more density. That is one of the issues. And for example, last fall, when the infill district downtown was being reviewed for renewal, I was one of the community members who went to public meetings, submitted comments, right, upon review of the policy and the renewed policy. And one of the things that was being proposed was a removal of density caps, for example. And the removal of the density cap varied according to whether it was a full-market project or one that included affordable housing. The height restrictions negate removing the density cap. In fact, I was the one who asked that question of planning and development services. I asked them the wisdom of having a height restriction on if you're working to remove a density cap. Not only did I ask the question, right, and pose it as a comment publicly in a meeting, but we also followed up with a letter to mayor and council with regards to that issue. And it was summarily ignored. And so now you may even hear my opponent talk about revisiting height restrictions. We worked to do that six months ago or more, and were ignored. So this is part of the conversation in looking at all of the tools in the toolkit that we have available to us and how we need to bring them to bear on the housing crisis, for lack of a better word. We have at least 3,000 in our community unhoused, and we also have 15,000 community members who applied for the housing voucher lottery that opened earlier this year because it hadn't been made available for five or six years. And so when we finally made it available, 15,000 applied. So not only in homeownership, but also in the rental market, we need to be able to increase the supply. And it's going to be infill, and it's going to be revisiting density.
Okay. Karen McWerder asks the question. What do you see as the biggest differences between you and your opponent?
So I will not have been appointed to mayor and council, right, as he was. I understand this is the first time he is challenged by another Democrat in the primary. I do not come from a political family. I do not get to plug into a political apparatus and press play. And so the dismissiveness that me and our campaign has had since the very beginning is a challenge that he does not have. We have been knocking on doors and have earned every signature. We have earned every vote of support. We have earned every endorsement. We have earned every dollar. And so the challenge that I am facing and will surmount is one he will not. Additionally, there's the policy pieces, right? Especially as it relates to housing. That's an expertise and insight that I bring that this mayor and council hasn't demonstrated, for example.
Next question is from Susie Anderson. As a Realtor, how do you see your role as a Realtor in increasing ways to save water and bring more energy-efficient power to the area?
Thank you, yes. As Chair of the Professional Development Committee for the Tucson Association of Realtors, in fact, I coordinated two panel discussions last year on water and the precious resource that it is to us, convening the experts in our area with regards to that issue. And one of the things that we continue to hear from our experts is that although we have a great culture of conservation here in Tucson, there is still more that we can do to conserve water. Just a couple of weeks ago, for example, I was driving by High Corbett Field, and the sprinklers were on at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. So even though we are a municipality that is in a far better position than arguably any other city in our state because we have been banking our CAP water and have been for a couple decades now, reducing our use, especially on the residential side of water, there is more that we can do. This mayor and council just recently passed, again, a renewed, a reviewed ordinance no longer allowing for decorative turf on newly constructed commercial projects. How about the commercial properties that have decorative turf now? So what conversation can we have with regards to incentives and incentivizing not only residential water users, but also commercial and industrial water users to use less water? And absolutely making it easier for people to implement more energy-efficient technologies into their home. Rainwater harvesting still remains expensive for most people. And we do have a revised rebate program, but still generally it costs multiple thousands of dollars to install a rainwater harvesting system in our homes. Then there's the conversation with regards to solar energy and the relationship between TEP specifically and the Arizona Corporation Commission, for example. I have asked the Arizona Corporation Commission, why is it that there are limits to the amount of solar power that either residential customers or commercial customers can use and generate? And their answer is that TEP determines those limits. When I ask TEP about those limits, TEP blames the Arizona Corporation Commission, right? So some of the conversation has to be related to that dynamic, those frameworks, in order to be able to, again, promote more energy-efficient technologies in multiple ways.
Next question from Maria Parsons. What specific goals within your power would you pursue to support Tucson in the face of climate change?
We have our new climate plan as a city. And again, we had a chance to extend our franchise agreement with TEP and what funding that may have brought with regards to achieving some of those goals. That proposition was voted down. And again, that's a conversation I think we need to have and delve deeper into, the amount of funding that would have been made available. In my view, doesn't amount to much, given the size of TEP as a corporation, right? So again, looking at the frameworks that the city has under its jurisdiction and discretion, so zoning and ordinances, right? And reviewing those in order to be able to maximize the efficiencies we can bring. Builders, by and large, are already utilizing those technologies in their building. They already use low-flow plumbing fixtures, for example. They have already done away with amenities or fixtures that drain those natural resources. So again, we have a culture of conservation that we need to build on. We should be the solar capital of certainly the United States, arguably the world, right? The way we are able to count on 360 days of sunshine a year, right? But when the power company and the Corporation Commission are pointing the finger at each other in terms of those limits of the solar power that can be generated, that is a broader discussion that we need to engage in. And in my view, nobody is engaging in that conversation yet.
Very good. And Susie asks the question. Are developers looking at building community solar panels for neighborhoods?
So the concept exists, right? And again, the legal frameworks and the logistical frameworks are lagging behind in our state and in our city. So the issue of energy efficiency is an issue that I've been tracking and been involved in as a consumer for years. Of course, I look at it differently now in light of policy and what exists or doesn't. But federally, the opportunities exist. Now we have to bring the federal realities to the state statute level in some cases, and then down to the local zoning and ordinances in order to be able to, again, implement them at the local level.
Following up on water. What I hear is there's a lot of talk about having people individually conserve water at their homes. However, residential use of water accounts for only 6% of all the use. And commercial buildings, like offices and so forth, only take 8% of the water. And where all of our water is going down the drain is in agriculture. They use 86% of all of our water. Now, there are crops grown in Tucson. What would be your approach to getting some conservation by agriculture? For instance, in Tucson, we grow very high-water-use crops, like cabbages, cabbage and oranges. Do you think it would make sense for the council to say, "We're no longer going to allow high-water-use crops to be grown in Tucson"?
That could be a step that needs to be taken, but before that, we should probably look at drip irrigation, for example. We could also look at combining technologies like installing solar canopies over crops that generate then solar energy, reduce the heat that the crops are being exposed to, and thereby lowering the evaporation and the amount of water needed for the crops. And also incentives, right? Because if a farmer is giving up a crop, that means that those are dollars and a business aspect that is being impacted. So how do we look at the entirety of our resources, right? Both those that are being generated, those that are being required, and those that could be made more efficient? So looking at drip irrigation, absolutely looking at crops that no longer can be supported in our region, right? And so then what strategic alliances do we need to develop in that way? There is also a lack of transparency as it relates to industrial and commercial water. So that's another issue that as a state we need to, I think, look at more seriously, be able to bring even more clarity to what our water situation is. I remember when I was studying to become a Realtor, one of the facts that I learned that I'm still shocked by is that it wasn't until 1980 that, as a state, we began inventorying the number of wells that we have. We still don't know how many wells exist in our state. And we still have areas of our state that are outside of what are called area management areas. And Cochise County, for example, just voted last year to be able to be an AMA. So we have a culture of conservation. We have banked and stored water. We're in a better position than many other municipalities, and still there is more work that we can do.
Okay. I've got a kind of little off-the-wonderful topics we've been talking. Certainly active in the community, certainly you care about the community, you know a lot about the issues. What's been the biggest surprise for you running for city council?
So this is a lived experience, right? And unless you have run for office, as I said, as civically engaged as I am and have been, there is truly nothing like running for office. There is nothing like it. It is not for the weak need or the faint-hearted and the multiple priorities that you have in a campaign, right? So not only are you, if you're not already aware and informed, right? And becoming aware and informed of the myriad of issues that confront our community on a daily basis in order to be able to understand where the priorities are and where possible solutions reside and the relationships that those will require. But the rest of your life does not stop happening because you decided to run for office. At the very beginning of this call, I also cautioned Joe that one of my sons was getting himself dinner, right? Because I am a mother and I am a single parent. I adopted my children from the foster care system when they were three and two. And now they are 13 and 11. And so the managing of the rest of my life in light of being on a Zoom at 6:36 on a Thursday evening with you all, or spending hours door-knocking, needing to to keep my livelihood going, right? Because I am a small business owner and a solo entrepreneur that is 100% commission-based, right? I haven't earned a regular paycheck since June of 2018. So I am still needing to earn my living every day or not, right? And fulfill the obligations that I have to those other organizations. Larry, you mentioned, I'm not the past president of Navo. I am the current president of the Tucson Chapter for the National Association of Women Business Owners. And I serve as a commissioner for the Pima County Tucson Women's Commission. And those have responsibilities that I want to meet and get to meet all the time. And then the ways that people's narrative And then the ways that people's narrative enters the dynamic, right? And so we really, I really do not ever know what any situation is going to be, right? When I'm door knocking, I don't know what the conversation is going to be. If someone answers the door, it's part of the surprise. And I was saying earlier that door knocking is probably my favorite part of the campaigning because it's, it is when I get some one-on-one time with voters and get to hear very directly from them on what is important, what matters to them, the change they want to see. And so it is all, it is a, it is a a sprint that occurs in a very little amount of time. Because we learned that we make the ballot in early April and then ballots are out July fifth, primary election is August first. So a lot has to happen in a very short amount of time.
Here's another, what are the three issues you and Paul Cunningham could shake on?
I believe housing has now really become uniform among all candidates. I don't think I have heard any incumbent or any candidate not indicate housing or affordable housing in some way, shape or form. I mentioned the data before, at least three thousand unhoused and another fifteen thousand who applied for our housing voucher program. So the need is there and it's directly related to the lack of supply. And that lack of supply didn't just emerge on us. The lack of supply began after the bust. And as a Realtor, I've been helping my clients navigate and negotiate the lack of affordable housing since twenty eighteen. This is not a new issue for me. It has been a challenge for me and my clients from the very beginning of my time as a Realtor. And that's also related to how our median income has not really changed in the time I've been looking at it, which is at least twenty, twenty-five years. And that median income, right? Anywhere, depending on the data source you look at, anywhere between the high forties and mid fifties plays into that affordability challenge. And so we need more supply. More supply is going to bring the ease that our market requires because the demand will remain strong for the foreseeable future. So the supply is a key part to the solution. And so how we get to the supply is really where the conversation needs to take place. So I would say, right, across the board, housing is agreed to as an issue. I would also say that public safety is agreed to. Different incumbents and different candidates are coming at it from the different vantage points. But we cannot and will not have prosperity as a community without public safety. And we will not have public safety without public trust. And so with the law enforcement I talk about, it's not related to compensation, although that is a factor, right? Because they were not, the city was not adhering to the agreements, the contractual agreements with our law enforcement and pay raises and steps. And so the city is meeting that obligation and also superseded the overall raise that all city employees will be getting, right? They're all getting three percent. Law enforcement is getting an additional two for a total of five percent. But that's also in light of an eight point nine percent increase in healthcare costs. So whatever increases being again negated by other costs, which tells me that there's also a review in terms of budget, right? We're going to face a fiscal, I'm going to call it cliff in twenty twenty-five. And so we have a very short window of opportunity to not only maximize the financial resources we currently have, but also plan for what is to come and the commitments that we are making. So on the compensation side, that is agreed to. But the morale is what will require new relationships. And I am one of those new relationships.
I've got a question lined up, and it has to do with pedestrian deaths. In fact, two times as many pedestrians are killed in Tucson hit by cars than in cities in nearby states. And most of them happen at the one hundred hawk mid-block pedestrian crossings where you press the button and the red lights come on. And the city has identified that the most dangerous intersections are on First Avenue, north of River and south of Grant. What steps would you take to reduce pedestrian deaths in Tucson?
So in my conversations with law enforcement with regards to that, that issue specifically, what they say, and I'm not sure it's been covered quite as much, is that substance abuse contributes greatly to those deaths as well or those injuries. So one thing is ensuring that, because again, from a transportation infrastructure vantage point, that's another endeavor for our city. I was surprised to learn that we, the last time we did a comprehensive transportation plan was back in nineteen eighty-three. There were some changes done in twenty sixteen and there are some other changes coming as a result of Prop four eleven, which we voted on last May. But there are certainly differences in our community that have taken shape in the last couple of decades. There was also another article out today with regards to intersection crashes. I don't know if any of you saw that one, but the east side, right, where Ward two is, accounts for just over a quarter of those intersection crashes. And so again, what does that information give us in order to inform what changes we need to make? Some of it might be related to the actual infrastructure, right? The signaling, the signage. But the substance abuse is another part of it. And people who are under the influence crossing in a way that's either dangerous or that goes against what's happening with traffic, and that plays into the context as well.
All right, let me ask you about COVID. I have several friends who are traveling and they all caught COVID on the plane, which made me wonder, what if there was a big spike in COVID? What if it came back just as bad as it did during the height of the pandemic? What steps would you take? For instance, would you close public schools? Would you close businesses? And would you require employees to get vaccinated?
So we need to make sure that we have access to the science, right? And what the experts are taking us. One, so there, the experience of COVID that we are still experiencing, right? We're not completely out of it is something that has impacted us in varying degrees. Thankfully, no one in my family got severely sick. There were a couple of us who did contract COVID. We were vaccinated and boosted, and so the impact was minimal. In other families, that was not the case, right? There have been devastations across the board and across the world. So first, it would be to ensure that the misinformation that has circulated be addressed head on, right? And so ensuring that the science, the information and transparency with regards to that be at the forefront. So that not only the public is made aware and maintained informed, but also so that decisions could be made. What we have available to us now that we didn't prior to the pandemic are all these technological tools, for example, right? This Zoom did not occur the way it occurs now prior to the pandemic. And so we have tools in our toolkit at our ready disposition. In addition to, I would say, a shift in mindset, right? One of the things that is negatively impacting especially our commercial space and our office space is the reluctance of people to go back to an office, right? And to go back to shared spaces with hundreds, sometimes thousands of other people. Why not still utilize the technology that we have available? And also normalizing people staying home if they don't feel well. So many people show up to work sick or so many children show up to school sick. The conversation has changed with regards to that. And so we have technology that we now have deployed and learned from and even built on as a result. And so we can keep people safe and productive in more ways now than we could before. We also know that vaccines work. They do, they have throughout human history. And so again, relying on the science and combating misinformation in order to keep people safe and productive.
So just to follow up, would you require all employees of the city to get vaccinated if we had a peak as we did last year?
Generally, when we require or mandate, it is hard to enforce. And so we certainly can encourage. And of course, there are those who have negative consequences as a result of any kind of even medication, right? So again, what lessons did we learn from this historic human tragedy? And how do we incorporate them into better, more effective, more efficient decision making? Should we find ourselves in a similar situation again?
Hey, on a different topic, I wanted to ask you about Tucson's economy. You had mentioned that you were in favor of streamlining some regulations and prioritizing the increase in the number of high school graduates. Having more high school graduates and a better educated workforce is certainly a very positive thing. How can the mayor and council act so that there are more high school graduates?
So that requires partnership. And partnership with the school districts within our city limits. That is also another lesson from the pandemic. T U S D, that's the district that my children, that we belong to in the schools that my children go to. I'd have to check their latest data, but they could not account for thousands of children after the pandemic. And that is true nationwide. I want to say nationally, there was a figure of fifty million students were unaccounted for in the educational system. And understanding who is supposed to be in school, right? In order to then understand what support do families and students need in order to continue and stay in school? One of my children has an I E P. And that's one of the main reasons why I have my children in public school is because that's where my son can get the resources and the support that he requires in order to be the best student that he can be. It also requires my involvement, engagement with the school and support from the teams at schools. So it requires partnership, it requires data, it requires effort. Our high school graduation rate has hovered at about seventy-five, seventy-seven percent. Again, for as long as I've been looking at our high school graduation rate, which is at least twenty years. And then if you break it down by different demographics, that number changes. But overall, and we need to prioritize improving our high school graduation rates in order to improve our educational attainment rates and other workforce development programs, right? Because that speaks directly to our talent pool and the attractiveness for not only our current employers and companies and business owners, but those we hope to recruit and retain going forward. The school districts within our municipalities, the partnerships that we can endeavor in and leveraging those relationships in terms of grant programs, for example. There are partnerships that could be developed further with Parks and Rec, for example. This summer break, I have my children in summer camps through Parks and Rec. And I, the feedback I have given Parks and Rec is that the programs they make available to families, especially during school breaks, is really crucial to me. I've said, I'm a single working parent. I need help and a network to be able to care for my family and me be able to afford it, right? Because the affordability and accessibility is an important part of the equation. So I believe there's lots of opportunity for new partnerships on that front. It also means that we'd be more responsive to not only women, but families in general. And that is something this mayor and council has struggled with in talking to some of the unions. They do not feel supported at all by this mayor and council in terms of medical leave, family leave, accommodations for pregnancy. And I understand those challenges as a single working mom.
A question from one of our longtime members, Andrea Kennedy. Go ahead, Andrea, and ask your question.
Hi, thank you, Laurie, and thank you for coming tonight, Lisa. I was listening to you mention you're outside the political machine. The political machine in its basic definition is hierarchical organization that works to get people elected, like the Democratic Party. And its worst incarnation, it's corrupt and it serves incompetence and people that just shouldn't be in government. It also occurred to me that if we had the corrupt kind, it's unlikely we'd be listening to you right now. But I wanted to know if you could say more on how you feel this political machine is structured? How do you feel that it's impeded the goals that you think this should be pursuing?
My integrity has been questioned, right? Even tonight, I got a question about my membership in a party. I'm a member of the Democratic Party. And so is it that we can only be a member a certain amount of time? Or what purity tests, right? Are we going to subject candidates to? I stated how we have been dismissed from the very beginning because of the challenge of taking on a political family, a network of support, a twelve-year incumbency, right? And so those are the challenges, those are the walls, let alone what happens behind the scenes, right? So this is what happens out in the open. And so it's not, again, I said, it's not for the weak need or the faint hearted. This will be the most difficult thing I do because it's also so public, right? It's for the public to engage and to have the opportunity to interact. And so the feat is not for everyone. And one that I am better for irrespective of the results of this primary. What I have gained and learned through this journey is absolutely worth every bit of it. But going up against being named to the city council, having been not challenged by a Democratic candidate in twelve years, the twelve-year incumbency, the political family and the political apparatus that just exists is among the greatest challenges.
Who has dismissed you? Because I certainly haven't heard anything about it.
I'm not saying you specifically. The dismissals have happened publicly, privately, on similar forums throughout the journey.
Anybody specific?
I don't want to specify people, they know who they are.
Joe, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, we have one question to finish things on. There is some thought about giving states control over land use planning decisions as municipalities do not seem effective at making local land use decisions, excuse me, such as building new homes as infill projects. Local residents are influential in opposing new homes.
I'm sorry, I didn't get to hear the whole question because my dog started barking. But I think, so the state statute that was proposed, of course, did not pass, right? It fell apart. And of course, the constitutionality of the overreach of the state to dictate those local ordinances, right? So that was a part of that conversation. So again, municipalities have tremendous influence in determining the zoning and ordinances for development. And I support us as a municipality. And I support us as a municipality exploring all of the variables that we can take into account in order to streamline and promote, again, the encouragement of supply being built because that is going to be the key piece in not only bringing down the cost of housing, but in partnership, being able to actually produce more housing and more affordable housing. The other thing I wanted to also mention is that I'm very proud to be a Democratic woman running for this office. About sixty percent of the electorate in the ward are women. And I think that as many opportunities as we can have women sitting at the table and sharing our perspective and giving voice to our issues is critical, especially in light of the Supreme Court decision last June on Roe v. Wade and essentially making women second-class citizens. That is the result, and we continue and will continue to feel the consequences of not only that decision, but then the other rounds of decisions that were made this session by the Supreme Court. And so again, ensuring that we have representation at every table, on every issue, in order to bring about better for our community. We deserve it.
Okay, Joe, we're out of time. Would you please bring this meeting to a conclusion and take it from there?
Yeah, thanks, Larry, and thanks for your help. For those folks who came in just after our opening, I'm in New Mexico, my wife and I drove there today. Didn't want to take any chances in case something happened on the road. And Larry, you very graciously agreed to be our host tonight, did a great job. And Lisa, thank you for being here. We really appreciate you taking the time, answering the questions. I would encourage everyone here tonight, encourage all your friends to become members of Democrats of Greater Tucson. Encourage them to get the newsletter. This video is going to be on the next newsletter, as well as lots of other great stuff.
Very much, Lisa, thank you very much, Joe. And we'll see you all at next Monday's meeting of Democrats of Greater Tucson. Good night.